All right. Good afternoon. It is five o'clock on August the 18th, 2023. I'm going to call to order this special call, City Council Meeting. I will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda. Have a motion from Ms. Marshman to adopt the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a second from Mr. Carter. All in favor? That is unanimous. All right, let's move right in to governing body, A1. This is a public hearing on the urban redevelopment plan. I'm going to ask Tommy Ratchford to come forward. I'm going to ask you to make a presentation right here, Tommy, and then I'll do a public hearing on this item. Welcome.
Thank you for having me. It's been a couple of weeks, I know, but glad to be back.
Yes, sir.
And appreciate the opportunity. So as I mentioned last time, we started this process of creating an urban redevelopment authority to help you all with the financing you're doing on the Mural Lake Connector. And your last meeting, you adopted a prerequisite resolution, which kicked off the process, and we're here today to talk about resolutions two and three, which complete that process. And as part of that process, you're required by law to hold a public hearing on your urban redevelopment plan. And so that notice ran in both Douglas Sentinel and the Times Georgian. Can y'all hear me all right?
There we are. Yep.
It's probably me. But so y'all ran a notice describing the plan, the date and time of the hearing and all that in accordance with law. And so essentially, what the plan is, is it's, the area is coterminous with your TAD, so it's the exact same area. And then your projects are the approved projects from the intergovernmental agreement with both the county and the school district. And so that was all laid out in the notice, and it's laid out in the plan. And so that would be my presentation on the plan. And at this point, I'd request that y'all open a public hearing on the
Okay.
urban redevelopment plan.
So let me start by asking if council has any questions of Tommy before I do the public hearing. Okay? If there are none, I will open up for a public hearing. Is there anyone here who would like to make comment for or against, or just in general for this All right, seeing no one, I will close the public hearing, and we will revert back. What, so Tommy, you're going to have to help us walk through this. This is sort of your deal, and I know there's several key pieces that we need to do, so I'm going to lean on you.
Okay.
What would you like to do next?
Let's move on to A2, if you don't mind.
All right.
So this is a resolution that actually designates the area and adopts the urban redevelopment plan. So you've noticed the plan, you've had your hearing, and now this resolution adopts the plan and designates the area. And so that's what you have before you. And I'm happy to answer any questions on the resolution, if council has questions.
Okay. And there is nine pages here. And then is this followed by a motion?
No, sir. But I wrote out a motion, if y'all would entertain it, to adopt this resolution and authorize the mayor and the city clerk to sign the necessary documents.
Okay, so let me do this. Yeah, Mr. Carter's got it. Let me see if council, any council members have any questions regarding this resolution before we get to a motion. Anybody? Okay. Mr. Carter, I'll recognize you for a motion.
I move to adopt the resolution and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute documents as needed.
All right, have a motion from Mr. Carter. Is there a second? A second from Ms. Marshman. All in favor? All right, that is unanimous. All right, Tommy?
Sir, I'll move on to item A3. So the final resolution of the city council to set up the urban redevelopment agency is a resolution establishing the agency. And so what this does is the city council creates the commission, which is constituted of yourselves, and that commission then is vested with the urban redevelopment powers, which will be used to issue the bonds. And there's one item in the resolution that is currently blank, and I just wanted to go over that with y'all. If you scroll down, it's naming the chair and vice chair. And after speaking with council, it's my understanding that for agencies in the city, the mayor is typically named as the chairman, and the mayor pro temp is named vice chair. Should be a little bit further right there. And so in addition to a motion, it would be my recommendation that you appoint the mayor as chair and the mayor pro temp as vice chairman of the board, if that's something that y'all are willing to
Okay. Are there any questions from council on that?
Well, I just noticed that the resolution says Chairman of the Board of Commissioners. I didn't know if that language was...
That's actually correct. It's a creature of the urban redevelopment agency. And so y'all would be known as commissioners when you're acting as a urban redevelopment agency. Another title to add to the litany.
Yeah, okay.
Sorry, it's a weird one.
We'll have to figure out how to write all that down. All right, anybody else?
Yeah.
Ms. Carter?
No. In the resolution itself, it designates the mayor and the mayor pro temp is in the resolution. Is that what you're saying?
It will be in the resolution if you also choose it to be.
Okay. We approve the resolution as part of it.
Yes, sir. And in your motion, I guess I would also include that you hereby appoint the mayor as the chairman and the mayor pro temp as the vice chairman of the Board of Commissioners.
Okay.
If you so choose.
All right, anybody else? All right, Mr. Carter, I'll recognize you for a motion.
I move to adopt the resolution and authorize the mayor and appoint the mayor as chairman and the mayor pro temp as vice chairman and authorize them to execute the documents as needed.
Perfect. All right. Perfect. That's a big word around here. Have a motion from Mr. Carter. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Montahan. All in favor? All right, that is unanimous. All right, Tommy. So now you want to take a break from this meeting to adjourn this meeting and then move into the urban redevelopment agency?
It's whatever your pleasure. We can do that at the conclusion of this meeting, or you can recess now.
What do you want to do?
The only thing we're going to do is recess.
All right.
Not adjourn, we're going to recess.
All right. So let me recess the special called meeting, and then we will move into the urban redevelopment agency. I will call to order the meeting of the urban redevelopment agency, and I'll ask for a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Have a motion from Mr. Montahan to adopt the agenda. A second from Ms. Marshman. All in favor? All right, we have adopted the agenda for the urban redevelopment agency. We're going to move into tab A, governing body. Number one, resolution organizing urban redevelopment agency, including the bylaws and the official seal. Tommy, I'll recognize you.
I appreciate it. So now that you've created the urban redevelopment agency and are serving as the commissioners of the agency, this resolution organizes y'all and sort of sets forth the different positions within the agency, as well as your bylaws, which are attached to the resolution. And you also, as part of the process, adopt a seal, which Teresa has in her possession. Trying to think of other things that I would be interested in in it. It names Teresa as clerk. She is the secretary of the agency, and it appoints Jennifer Hallman, Finance Director, as treasurer of the agency.
Okay.
And at this point, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have on this resolution.
Sure. Is there any questions for Tommy? All right, if there are none, Mr. Carter, I'll recognize you for a motion.
Okay, I think we do these together. I move to adopt the resolution and authorize and appoint the city clerk as secretary and the finance director as treasurer, and authorize those to execute the documents as needed.
All right, have a motion from Mr. Carter. Is that one also perfect?
Yes, sir. More than perfect.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second from Ms. McPherson. All in favor? All right, that is unanimous. All right, now we are going to, so we took care of A1 and 2 there. Did we take care of 3?
No, sir.
Okay, go ahead.
Bill Johnson's here with Stevens, and he has the more interesting part of the presentation, going over a couple of the numbers, and there you have it.
This packet?
Yep, that packet. And so I'll be here to answer any technical questions you may have on the resolution and talk about kind of what it does. But Bill has the, like I said, the interesting portion of it.
Wonderful. Come on up here, Bill. Good to see you again.
It's one of the first times I've heard someone say the financing parts are more interesting, so.
Pull that mic down, just a hair.
Can you hear me?
There you go.
Good, thank you. Thank you for gathering today. This has been a long process, as you well know. Our portion of it is to really do a lot of analytical work, assist the city in, in really structuring financially the financing and obtain the financing. We sent out proposals to, requests for proposals to about a dozen banks. We received really three proposals from three banks. One bank had multiple alternatives. And let me march you through those with the presentation that I put before you. Page 2, this is really a summary of those proposals. And those that didn't propose, just to provide a little color, is that some people were leaving, they didn't have time to focus on it, vacations, that sort of thing. None said, oh, we don't like the credit or anything like that. That had nothing to do with it. I mean, they were busy doing other things. And so, you know, but we got some very, very good bids.
Bill, Bill, could you speak a little bit closer to the mic?
Yes, sir.
That's better, yes.
Okay. And so really, the ones that we received and considered were three alternatives from JP Morgan Chase, a very, very large financial institution, largest in the country, Webster Bank, who I've done a fair amount with recently, and Capital One, who has done a lot with us up in the Carolinas.
Bill, hang on just a second for me. Do you have a copy of Bill's presentation that you could put up on the screen?
I don't have it.
We don't. So I'd like for this to be uploaded for the public to be able to view it. Sorry about that. Bill, go ahead.
Okay.
It's just that we got people watching at home, they're not able to see this.
Got it. I've got an electronic version I'll get to you.
All right, that'll be fine.
Okay. In analyzing these particular proposals, option one or option A is non-callable. I would not recommend the city do that because part of the goal in your negotiations with the school board and, really the school board, but the county too, is to pay these bonds off early. That doesn't give you the chance to do that. And so if you need to restructure the issue over, you know, over time, you can't do that. So you're hamstrung to do anything. So we rejected that. The next option is really a seven-year call. That's too far out. Same thing. We want to be able to call bonds as soon as we possibly can. And so of all the options that we've been given, the most logical is option B from JP Morgan Chase at a 4.48 tax exempt rate. Webster Bank was at a 4.48, but their call was, was really two years longer, and Capital One's was a 4.89, and theirs was much further out. So it was really out of the money. Page 3, the size of the financing to accomplish what you're doing. And I have the project list at the back, if we need to look at that later, is $20 million, 985,000. We have cost of issuance of right around $330,000. That's less than what we originally budgeted during our analytical period. We're borrowing money for the first really two and a half years to carry the debt while the project is being constructed and the tax increment starts throwing off taxes. So that's carrying you for really two and a half years. The amount of money going into a construction fund is $19 million for all of the projects that you have scheduled. Page 4, it's pretty busy, a lot of information here, lays out the debt service. But the thing that you may want to focus on is, is there was a great deal of interest on how long it would take with the projected revenues from the TAD there in the back, if we need to look at it. Could you pay these bonds back early? And so with the size of the bond financing and the projected revenues that you have, it's right around 10 and a half years. The financing's right around 20, but because additional funds would be coming in, you have the ability to call bonds early, it'd take about 10 and a half years. If there's more money than that, you pay it off quicker. So you have the option to do that. But I know the school board wanted to see this. Y'all have had an interest in this schedule, and so that's what this does. So really, it's about 10 and a half years. Page 5 shows the projects and then the revenue off of that, if there are any questions. But my recommendation is for the city to accept JP Morgan Chase's option B, which is a callable anytime, really after three years, callable financing at 4.48%.
Okay, Tommy, I mean, sorry, Bill, is there a, is there a motion attached with this to do that?
Really, I have not attached the motion, but really, the motion would be to accept the JP Morgan Chase option B proposal.
Sounds like Tommy may have something. I mean, council may have a question too, but I want to have my ducks in a row.
So the bid that Bill's talking about is included in the bond resolution, so that's the recommendation. And then you have the bond resolution before you that captures all the terms of their proposal, including that call option he was mentioning, which was part of your governmental agreement with the school district and the county, to be able to pay them off early as you have more increment coming in.
No, I understand. So A3, when we adopt the bond resolution, it already has in the recommended option that...
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there any questions for either Bill or Tommy from council? If there is not, who has, Mr. Carter, do you have a motion on this one too? All right, I'll recognize Mr. Carter for a motion.
Okay, I move to adopt the resolution and authorize the chairman and secretary to execute documents as needed.
All right, I have a motion from Mr. Carter. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second from Ms. Marshman. All in favor? All right, that is unanimous. Okay, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the urban redevelopment agency.
So moved.
Have a motion from Mr. Carter to adjourn the urban redevelopment agency. And a second from Ms. Marshman. All in favor? All right, that meeting will be adjourned. I will come back from recess now into the special called meeting of August the 18th, 2023, and we will move to, I want to take this out of order if I could, because we have someone waiting on Zoom. You got something, David?
Uh, no, I was just chatting.
Okay, got you. All right, let me, Sarah, are you ready? Okay. Well, Ken, but I just want to make sure we have her on Zoom or ready to go behind me, or ever how we're going to communicate with her. All right. So we're going to skip down, and we're going to go to tab B. And this will be the branding slogan, a presentation by Ken Denny, the PIO, and I believe he has someone joining us from the branding company.
We are attempting to establish contact, Mr. Mayor, but I can begin.
All right, well, let me let you go ahead and begin. I was thinking she was just waiting to go. We just have a little technical. Okay, go ahead, Ken.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. In January, the city began working with Rhyme and Reason Design of Atlanta to develop a logo for the city that we will use next year in our comprehensive marketing. In the months since, we've been following RNR's tried and true process of designing that logo by first developing a tagline or a phrase that will help their graphic artists create a visual representation or a logo that we will use to brand the city. Branding is a marketing term that basically means messaging or storytelling. We need to find the story that we all agree best represents what Villarica means to all of us. We can then use that message to focus our messaging on community development, marketing, and tourism in a way that helps build our city without taking away those things that make it so special to us. The slogan that we are proposing will come as no surprise. It's "The City of Gold." But from that, we plan to tell the story of Villarica as the city of golden opportunity or golden opportunities. It may seem strange that we should spend such a long time to develop a slogan that we already have. But having that slogan doesn't tell us how we should use it to tell our story. That is what this long process has told us. On March 21st, a group of 42 Villaricans chosen to match the racial and gender diversity of the city met in four separate focus groups. They were asked about the things that they liked and disliked about the city and how they felt about living here. A few weeks later, starting with the public input meeting series that we held across town, an online survey was conducted for the same purpose. Altogether, we received input from 158 people citywide. In May, Rhyme and Reason produced for us a 101-page document that detailed what all these residents felt were our community's strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. This is the most in-depth research product of its type that I've seen for this city. It showed that our greatest strengths are our hometown feel, our accessible location, and our history. It showed we need to strengthen how we communicate our goals and plans to the community, and it found that we have opportunities for more diverse businesses and entertainment downtown. The RNR team and city staff distilled these findings into a series of taglines that I ultimately passed along to you in two rounds. The attachment to this agenda item shows that list of choices. On both rounds, some of you had a secondary preference, so I scored a half vote for those. So in the first round, where there was no consensus, there were two votes for the value of community, one vote for gold at heart, one and a half votes for the city of gold, and one and a half votes for a golden opportunity. In the second round, there was only one vote for the value of community. The city of gold had 2.5 votes, and a golden opportunity got two votes. This indicates to me that the city of gold slogan, which has been in use for many decades, almost 100 years in fact, has become so ingrained in our community that it encapsulates how everyone feels. In other words, it's lasted so long because it works. But the golden opportunities slogan also has appeal. So now that we have research to back up the fact that city of gold should be our slogan, we now get to plan how to use it in a marketing sense. That's where we come to the golden opportunities brand campaign. Scarlett Rosier, co-founder and director of operations for Rhyme and Reason, has a rather good idea on how we will proceed, and I will let her explain it to you briefly.
Just try that handheld mic for time.
I'm, okay. Hold on. Yeah, I've got to fit a mic next to my mic.
Okay, go ahead.
Not well.
No, that's not coming through the speaker at all. Is that microphone on?
For me, but that's okay. I'll make sure I have my speakers on. Thank you. This is where there is all that. I had a foot in there. I was controlling the last sound. The brain's out. I don't know if it's a store that interests me. I suggest make it work this way. I apologize.
All right, try that. Speak for me.
Can you hear me?
Not well.
Do you want me to go louder? I'm not that loud, I realize.
All right, it's coming through there a little bit. Let's go ahead and try that.
Coming through.
Go ahead.
I can also, would it be helpful if I, like, I could call a cell phone and you could put a mic to the cell phone? Would that be easier?
Yes.
Okay. I'll put my cell phone mute and then Sarah, are you calling me? Does I have your number? Yeah, I'll call you. One second.
I guess we gave the IT guys a day off, or evening off.
Where's the GM when you need him?
Yes, can you hear me?
That's better. Go ahead.
Sorry. Everyone's going down. All right. Change, change rates. Okay, you can hear me? Everyone good? Yes. Perfect. Hi, thank you all for chatting. I'm also going to try to share my screen, which might add another layer of technical difficulties. But I'm going to use an example of a client that isn't the city, but it's a tourism arm of a city in Louisiana called St. Tammany Parish. We recently went through a rebranding process with them that was a similar timeline to y'all. Everyone goes through research and immersion, everyone goes through tagline experiences. There's always the, the goal here is always that we get enough community buy-in that everyone is able to become a brand champion for the experience when it is done, and it ensures that we have the most successful end results. So this client just recently launched. They changed their name, they changed their tagline, and they also, similarly to you all, decided that they liked one of their slogans, taglines during the tagline phase enough that they would make a marketing campaign out of it. So similarly to you all, city of gold, and then a marketing opportunity, golden opportunities for this organization. Let me try to share my screen. I will explain a bit more. All right. Can y'all see my screen? Yes. Okay, so this is the organization's new tagline, a new primary logo. It's called "Visit the North Shore," and their logo is "Visit the North Shore," and their primary tagline is Louisiana's Easy Escape. Nice and clear, very definitive, very clear as to what they are. Similarly, you know, helps you ask questions, but also is a nice grounding experience to pay off the actual brand itself. But, and you can, we can chop through this a little bit more, so you can see, this is also what you all are going to get at the very end of this project. You're going to get a nice big brand standards guide. This one is 42 pages. It goes through literally all the pieces that you could possibly use for your brand. So color alt, variations on your logo with the tagline, without the tagline, the horizontal mark, there's just the tagline itself. So lots and lots of things are coming your way through this process. And it's just, you know, we're in the really great state to get to this, to this end result. So just a whole bunch of goodies here, but we'll get to their actual brand, which was "Sure to Be." And that is their campaign that they went with. Sorry, my screen just, you can see "Sure to be delighted." Ooh, I'm sorry, my screen keeps bouncing around. And "Sure to be dreamy," "Sure to be blissful," "Sure to be flavorful," lots of different options. "Sure to Be" was one of their tagline options that they loved so much that they wanted to be part of their branding campaign, but not something that they wanted to live with forever. They wanted something for their tagline, and slogan was something that they wanted to be comfortable with for a long period of time that solidified who they were in their area and also allowed them plenty of growth for the future where they could remove the tagline and the brand would still stand on its own. And then taking the "Sure to Be," which was cute and kitschy, and something that people, you know, really, really liked, and a really nice opportunity to kick off the brand, but it's not something that they have to live with forever. It starts the conversation, it gets it going, it encourages people to recognize the new brand. You can even see this new brand doesn't have the tagline in it in most of their marketing campaigns because that's not what they're trying to present always. So it's a really nice, you know, way to play with the primary brand, having a mark, having a tagline, having a message that everyone in your community can rally behind and find comfort in and get really, you know, everyone has already worn it on their sleeve. Now it's the opportunity to continuously wear it on their sleeve with a new enhanced brand that everyone's proud of. But also, you know, it gives you a nice transition period to go through telling the story and building it out with that concept of golden opportunities. So, and that concept of golden opportunities doesn't have to, you know, that doesn't have to live for forever. It doesn't have to pass the test of time, but it does allow you to start that conversation and start talking about all of the opportunities in the city of gold, all the things that you all are doing as a community, as a city, as a council, to ensure that there's growth, there's economic development, that there is positive change, and that there's continual positive brand and community awareness of what, what you all are doing as a city. So those are probably my best and most recent experiences shares. Most of our clients actually do have Uh, most of our clients actually do have a tagline and then a marketing campaign and slogan that goes along with it. So most of our clients have a, their primary brand and a primary tagline, and the tagline can, can be added on, can be removed, again, as you see in this brand experience, but then they also have a campaign so that you're not diluting your primary brand and your ta, primary tagline with things that might not be, you know, as long-lasting. So this gives you a really nice way to, to play with the message, to tell multiple stories of your organization and of your community, and really gives a lot of legs for continual growth, which I know the community is really looking to do.
All right, does anyone have any questions for us?
Counsel, anybody have any questions? Ms. McPherson.
So do we have a sample of maybe something we're looking at yet, or is that yet to come because we've just chosen?
We need the slogan first, before we can have any kind of artistic renderings.
Not that I expect the beach setting per se. Maybe on a lake.
All right, anybody else? Yeah, what are, what are you asking for here?
I'm asking the, uh, counsel to, if, I, I don't know that there's any historical record that we've ever adopted the City of Gold as the official motto or slogan for the city, but that's what I'm asking you guys to do tonight.
There is a motion?
What's the difference between a slogan and a tagline?
It's just the same, different word for the same thing.
No, it's not.
Yeah, I, I, I think she just spent a good amount of time telling us that there's a difference.
Yeah, the tagline, I think.
So we're asking for two things. So like she was showing for the North Shore, the easy escape is their tagline, or slogan as Ken was calling it. That is the tagline that will stick, that's what she's gonna build the logo around. Um, we were getting feedback that the council also liked Golden Opportunity or Golden Opportunities. I guess we need to figure out the grammar of that, which fits better. That would be that second component, a marketing campaign. And that doesn't have to be permanent, that can be something we build on and use in the meantime, um, but that doesn't become the official tagline. It's just part of the campaign when we push out the new logo, the new colors, and all of that.
But what you're looking for tonight is for the slogan to be City of Gold.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then as far as the tagline, that may evolve over time, but that's sort of gonna set the stage for this initial campaign.
That's gonna be determined by our overall marketing and how we're going to use it and things like that.
Right. And the reason that this is on the agenda tonight, for those who are curious why this would show up here tonight, is because she's been trying to get this going for several weeks now, and what we were doing, you know, at the city manager's office was saying, let's make sure we have the council weigh in on this. So we had Ken going back and forth to make sure we could get some input, and then tonight he wants to do it officially, so that this becomes the official slogan of the city, and then she can get to work on the, the larger picture. Ms. McPherson was right, I think, to ask that question. It's the first question I asked in, in the first meeting, was, show me something. She said, I can't show you anything until you give me a, a slogan. So that's how this, that's how we got here tonight. So does anybody have any questions now? Mr. Carter? Yes, sir. I recognize you for a motion.
Okay.
Hold on, I got a question.
Okay.
So what's gonna go on the city seal?
City of Gold.
Also?
Why not?
The seal.
It already says that.
It already says City of Gold.
I know. What it says now is irrelevant. We can make it whatever we want to.
Well, that's gonna be the tagline.
But that's what the proposal is, to be the slogan, tagline, the City of Gold, and use this Golden Opportunity as a marketing campaign.
The tagline's gonna go on the new logo. The question is, what's gonna go on the seal?
That's the motto, right? City of Gold.
Oh, I see.
No, no, you're mixing words. The only word that we have used the whole time is tagline. Slogan has never been used, motto has never been used. The only thing we've talked about is selecting the tagline.
So what are you thinking? What, give us some help here. What are you thinking should be on the seal? Not necessarily the words, but a tagline, a motto?
I don't know. This is a Scarlett.
Well, so what we're really not doing tonight is going that far. All we're doing tonight is creating the slogan. I mean.
I don't know.
Yeah, the slogan.
Scarlett needs to tell us what we need to decide.
Well, once we get into branding, I feel like she can get, get closer to that. You wanna let her? I'll recognize her. Go ahead. Scarlett?
Sorry. I'm like sharing the ad background. Um, the City of Gold is your tagline. It'll be Villarica, the City of Gold. Will be your, like, the Visit the North Shore will be Villarica, the City of Gold, with some, like, you know, whatever comes out of it. And then you will also have a breakdown of your mark, similarly to what I just showed with Visit the North Shore, that had variations with and without the logo, with and without icons, stacked, horizontal, all those goodies. You'll also have your, your seal, and it would say the City of Gold, 'cause that is, again, the brand, the messaging tagline that you will take forward with you. The Golden Opportunities is a marketing campaign that will last until you're real tired of it.
Okay, what did you?
Does that help?
So would it be correct to say the tagline is the thing that's solid and hangs around?
Mm-hmm.
The other things are the ones.
You can even remove it. You can, like, there are plenty of brands that don't, Coca-Cola is one of them, Coca-Cola, you know, Open Happiness, I think, is their current one. That didn't last forever, and, but the Coca-Cola mark, that's like actual logo mark and the font, has stuck around. They've just removed the tagline element after, you know, so many years. But the goal is that the tagline lasts as long as possible. The marketing campaign is leading. Uh, but we're gonna design it so that you, again, have a mark that has the ability to exist without the tagline, and, but still nod to the fact that you all are known for being the City of Gold, gold in your history, gold in the opportunities that you have in the economic growth, and all of those experiences that were talked about during the focus groups and surveys.
So you want them to approve a tagline of City of Gold and to use the tagline in the seal, and to use Golden Opportunities or whatever?
As a marketing campaign.
In the, in the marketing as you get into that. So is that, is that clear to everybody?
As mud. I mean, what we're doing here is just adopting City of Gold as the official slogan.
Tagline, yeah.
We should call it tagline.
Well.
Tagline.
So that's not what the motion says.
Well, we'll change slogan to tagline.
All right, well, let's do that.
All right.
Let's go. Mr. Carter?
Okay. I understand the motion, except that when it gets to the other marks part, I don't know what the other marks means.
Those were, you know how she was scrolling through all the, the different designs she gave for that? Go ahead, Scarlett.
Can you bring it back up? That's helpful.
What she's redesigning will have various, um, will have variations of the new logo.
That's what the other marks mean.
The other mark.
Okay. All right, I'll go with the motion here. I move that the Villarica City Council endorse City of Gold as the official tagline for the redesigned Civic logo. What are you waving for? I said City of Gold. It doesn't say the.
Hold on just a second. All right, we can't have anything from.
It doesn't say the.
Ken, because I thought it was the City of Gold, but this motion does not say that.
Okay. Okay, let's.
All right, Mr. Carter. Sorry, I apologize. Let me recognize you again, it is the City of Gold.
Got it. We'll, we'll rearrange this thing to get it right.
Yes, sir.
I move that the Villarica City Council endorse the City of Gold as the official tagline for the redesigned Civic logo and other marks.
All right, I have a motion for Mr. Carter. Mr. Barber?
That's not what we've been doing.
It's not what's on here, yeah. All right, well, we're gonna make it.
So you're voting to change it.
Right.
Just so you know.
Okay, pause. Can we pause? Because if you look at it, it does seem, the does seem to be unnecessary, doesn't it? When it just says City of Gold, if you were to put the City of Gold, what does the add to what's there right now?
'Cause it means it's the only one, it's the City of Gold.
Yeah, you need to go back to Scarlett.
Forget Delaniga, right?
That's right. Forget Delaniga.
See, that discussion actually occurred in City Hall, and that is exactly the explanation that I was given. I was perfectly fine with City of Gold, and I, I got this, uh, rundown of how it's the, the, there's not another one anywhere else, it's the, which to me, City of Gold accomplished that. But, I mean, I'm happy either way. Frankly, I'm happy either way.
Technically, shouldn't it be Georgia's City of Gold?
Come on now. Come on now.
It's gonna be like the car stacking all over again in that.
Hold on, Scarlett's trying to talk again. Say it again, Scarlett.
He said, say it again.
Oh, I, I actually was thinking, I just showed Louisiana's Easy Escape. Someone is gonna say, why not Georgia's City of Gold instead of the City of Gold? That's fine, you can, Georgia's City of Gold, I, I, I'd probably pick that over the City of Gold, 'cause then you're real clear about where you are. It gives you, it also tells you exactly where you are. That was part of why Visit the North Shore won at Louisiana's, 'cause there was a lot of, there are several other North Shores in the country. There are no other Villaricas in the country, though. You are the only one.
Fair enough.
You are the only City of Gold.
Mayor?
Yeah, yes, ma'am.
So Scarlett, I'm okay either way, because I feel like that's why we hire people like you, because they wouldn't come hire me to figure out taglines and promotions and things like that. That's not my background, it's not my wheelhouse, and that's why we look to people like you to help. I mean, maybe we'll narrow it down, but we need people that specialize in this, who work in other cities, who know what works and what doesn't work, and what sells with people and what doesn't, to kind of guide us. And that's why I'm okay with either, either, really. Whatever works.
We can, what we can do, if we're literally determining between the and without the, we can do several variations. The, again, was because it is the only, so, and that was one of the biggest, actually, that came up a multitude of times in our research, which was an important part, and the fact that a lot of people in the city have made that point was why we wanted to put the. But we can show options with and without. Um, I will say, in the space of the seal, for example, it actually, you know, depending on the space, when you start getting seals really, really small, like, it's really, really hard to see things, um, in the, actually, here, I'll bring up that stocked logo again of the North Shore, so you can see how we actually had to remove some things to allow for space. So there may be instances where the isn't used every single time because of space requirements.
We'll look at what you're about to show, but I, I think if we're gonna get something here tonight, I feel like, is there any objection up here to this being City of Gold? I just feel like that's where we need to be. I feel like that's where we need to be, and if some of the variations end up showing the, then, you know, it's not like we've broken any laws. We'll be fine with it. So can we do that?
One more time?
Yeah, Mr. Carter?
All right, let's try this again. I move that the Villarica City Council endorse City of Gold as the official tagline for the redesigned Civic logo and other marks.
All right, I have a motion for Mr. Carter. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a second for Mr. Momtahan. Any further discussion? All in favor? That is unanimous. All right, thank you, Scarlett. Thank you, Ken, Sarah.
You're welcome. Congratulations.
You now have something you can go work on. I look forward to seeing what you've got.
Thank you, guys, and just for, just for a point of note, uh, throughout all of history, designing.
Get a little closer.
Designing a city logo and a city tag throughout all of history has been a complicated process, so thank you.
All right, thank you, Ken. But it didn't all take place, uh, late Friday evening. Okay, I wanna move to A four, repeal of the moratorium. Mr. Macklin?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. The city council imposed a moratorium on applications for residential development south of I-20 and high-density residential throughout the city back on, in May of this year, in conjunction with the intergovernmental agreement with the cities, with the county school system. Uh, we've now implemented, uh, the process, we've established a joint review committee, which takes away the necessity of having the moratorium, so I'm asking that you repeal it.
Okay, do we have a motion on this? Okay, uh, who would like to be recognized for a motion? Who has it? Mr. Carter?
Okay.
He's done real well so far. He's always the first one here, he does such a great job. Go ahead, Danny.
I move to terminate the temporary moratorium on the acceptance of any applications relating to the licenses, zoning for, variance for, building of, expansion of, or redo, or development of residential development in cities south of I-20, and the multifamily or high-density residential development anywhere within the city that was enacted by the council on May the twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three. This repeal of the moratorium is subject to the compliance with the joint review process previously enacted by the council.
All right, have a motion for Mr. Carter. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a second for Ms. McCoy? All in favor? All right, that is unanimous, that moratorium will now be listed, lifted. Let's go to A five, the appointment of, of city members for the joint review committee. Mr. Macklin?
Based on the action that you took, we created a joint review committee. The city is required to appoint two people to serve on that committee. We don't really have a formal process yet, uh, as to how we're gonna do that long-term, but for the short term, we'd like to get two people appointed to the joint review committee so that that committee can begin its work immediately, uh, and we are proposing that you appoint the city manager and the deputy city manager as the city's first two appointees to that committee that would last through December thirty-first of this year.
Okay, are there any questions for Mr. Macklin? All right, Mr. Carter, recognize you for a motion.
Now, you've got the names in here, should I use city manager and deputy city manager, or should I use these names?
Yeah, you can just use city manager and deputy city manager.
I move to approve the attached resolution appointing city manager and the deputy city manager as the city's representatives on the joint review committee through December the thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three.
Okay, and just as a side note, if we were to adopt a, a process for those appointments prior to that, uh, we would fill those, uh, earlier, just so that, for the information of the council and for the public. All right, is there a second? A second for Ms. Ms. Marchman? All in favor? All right, that is unanimous. All right, let's move to, uh, public comment. Is there anyone here who would like to give public comment this afternoon? All right, seeing none, I will close public comment. I wanna thank everyone for their time here tonight. We had some really important stuff we needed to get done. The bonds were incredibly important. Tommy, I wanna thank you for being here.
Thank everybody who stays, we're sitting in chairs, right?
I guess the mayor, he has a few minutes.
Not everybody.
Okay. Uh, with that, I will, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn. I have a motion for Ms. Marchman to adjourn, a second for Mr. Momtahan, all in favor? That's unanimous, we're adjourned.
Guess you'll have somebody in your office Monday morning, or in Ron's office Monday morning.